Good evening. I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Campbell City Council on Tuesday, June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, and I'd like to welcome our acting city attorney today, Tori Thompson, who's filling in for our city attorney Bill Seligman, and welcome to Ken Ramirez, our staff analyst from Community Development, who's helping us at the clerk's desk today. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Lopez.
Here.
Councilmember Cazola.
Here.
Councilmember Fortado.
Here.
Vice Mayor Landry.
Present.
May I, Bobby?
Present.
The next item is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd like to invite Lauren Merriman, Kurt Brown, and Lauren Council up to lead the Pledge of Allegiance, and if everyone would please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under our invisible liberty and justice well.
If you wanted to stand there for a minute, I have a few comments I'd like to make about each of you. Lauren and Kurt and Lauren were invited to lead the Pledge of Allegiance in recognition of recently received awards from the California Parks and Rec Society. Lauren Merriman, who's our Recreation Services Manager, was recently awarded the Distinguished Professional Award. This is the California Park and Recreation Society District Board's highest award in recognition of lifetime achievements. It is presented to professionals who have demonstrated leadership and initiative and have made significant contributions to CPRS and the field of parks, recreation, and/or human services. Congratulations, Lauren. Next, Kurt Brown, who is our utility worker, was recently awarded the Professional Merit Award. This award is presented to those who have made a significant contribution to their agency or the field of parks, recreation, and/or human services. Kurt was recognized for his ongoing dedication to the department and his willingness to step in and help in every situation. Thank you, Kirk, and congratulations. Last but not least, Lauren Council, our recreation supervisor, was recently awarded the Board One Hundred Award, which honors outstanding work done by the California Park and Recreation Society's district, sections, and regions who have exemplified creativity, innovation, and member engagement. This is awarded by the CPRS State Board annually and was awarded to Lauren at the state conference in March for her planning and execution of the Region Two Mini Conference Plug In and Power Up. This mini-conference offered a one-day training that offered different educational sessions designed to develop the skills and knowledge of recreation and park professionals in counties of San Francisco, San Mateo, Santa Clara, Calaveras, Mariposa, Merced, San Joaquin, Santa Claus, Tuolumne, Monterey, San Benito, and Santa Cruz. Congratulations, Lauren. I just want to congratulate each of you for your outstanding achievement and recognition, and this is in addition to the daily work that you all do here for the city, so well deserved. And I'll open it up to council members if they would like to make a comment or share. Councilmember Fortado?
Yes, I'd like to congratulate you and thank you for your many years of service to the city of Campbell, and I'm very proud of the work that you have accomplished, and thank you very much for your long service to the city. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Landry?
Great job, guys, girls, gals, I guess. Wonderful. It's so great to see our employees excel, and not only us, but that other community organizations and groups recognize how great you guys are, so thank you.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yeah, it's congratulations to all of you and to the entire department. Parks are such a part of what makes Campbell special and what our residents appreciate. So it's great to really congratulate each of you on your excellence and dedication. Thank you.
And Councilmembers Cazola?
Who doesn't love parks and recreation? Come on, guys. Yeah, congratulations. Just want to echo, congratulations to everybody up here. Very proud, and I can't wait until the summer concerts.
Great, and I'm going to come down and present you with a certificate of appreciation. So that takes us to item one on the agenda, which is a special presentation and proclamation, and it's a proclamation declaring July two thousand and twenty-three as Parks and Recreation Month. Welcome to all of the Parks and Rec staff. It's great to see you here. And I have a few comments I'd like to make. Since nineteen eighty-five, the U.S. House of Representatives has designated the month of July as National Park and Recreation Month to bring awareness to the importance of parks and recreation programs. Campbell Recreation and Community Services Department is an integral part of the community, providing open space and recreational activities that promote health and wellness programs for the community to keep families active and engaged. The range of offerings include youth sports and enrichment activities, teen programs, senior adult and nutrition programs, adult fitness, aquatics programming, preschool, free community events, including the summer concerts, and much more. Our facilities and programs reflect and celebrate Campbell's community character, heritage, and culture. To recognize the importance and value that recreation programs provide to the community, I proclaim the month of July as National Park and Recreation Month in the city of Campbell and encourage all residents to enjoy the wonderful programs offered and recognize the contributions our recreation staff make to the community every day. So congratulations, and if Natasha wants to come to the podium. Well, first of all, let me open it up to my colleagues, and they might have a comment or two to offer congratulations. Councilmember Fortado?
Thank you. Yes, well, once again, I want to say thank you very much for our recreational services. I mean, they are an important element of our city. Our residents appreciate that. The classes are excellent, and the variety of classes and those that are sort of geared towards specific age groups, I think is very helpful, and so I'm just very pleased that we have the facilities as well as an excellent staff to implement this project. Thank you. And volunteers on the boards and commissions.
Vice Mayor Landry?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Natasha, for leading such a wonderful department. One of our strategic plan goals talks about community, and Parks and Rec is such a huge part of that. All the things that we want to offer, the services, I mean, from senior nutrition to swimming to having playgrounds. I mean, it's just wonderful what your department does, and thank you for being the leader.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yeah, I also want to embarrass Natasha a little as well, so I, you know, we just heard about some of the exceptional individuals, but appreciate you creating an environment in a department where, you know, everybody is so dedicated and always delivering, always seeking to improve for our community, but really thank you for all your work as well.
And Councilmember Cazola?
Yeah, I know I'm incredibly biased, but I really do truly think we have some of the best services possible, and I'll never forget, you know, one example in my own personal life is my daughter learned to swim at the community center, and I think the community center has so many valuable, amazing programs there, and but it's not just me. I hear it from people outside of Campbell, even that come to Campbell for some of these park services, and we just have a really great reputation, and a lot of it has to do with all of you, of course. Thank you.
Thank you, and now Natasha, if you'd like to come to the...
I just want to just say real quickly, thank you. It's really an honor, and Parks and Recreation Month, we're celebrating this vital role that parks and recreation have in our community. We bring people together, we provide essential services, and we foster the growth of our community, and that comes from the commitment of the city council and the, and our executive team, knowing that this is a priority for our community. We have one hundred and fifty-nine full-time and part-time employees right now. Seventy-four of them are just for our summer recreation programs, and this year for July, we're really stepping things up. I know annually you guys elect to declare the month of July as Park and Recreation Month, but this month we're collaborating with our national professional organization and using their campaign, Where Community Grows, and so our team who's here, and they're wearing their awesome shirts, will be doing thirty-one days of events this July, so we encourage you to participate in our events. The information can be found online at campbellca.gov/PRM for Park and Recreation Month. You can follow us on Instagram, CampbellRecreation, but again, just a huge thank you to all of you for your continued commitment in declaring July as Park and Recreation Month and your ongoing support of our programs, our services, our facilities, and maintaining the heritage of Campbell with our museum and historical sites that we have. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Tonight, we have no communications and petitions. This takes us then to oral request. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the city council on any matter not on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the council are requested but not required to complete a speaker's card. Speakers are limited to two minutes. The law generally prohibits the council from discussion or taking action on such items. However, the council may instruct staff accordingly regarding oral requests. I do have a couple of requests tonight in the chamber. The first is Amy Taylor. If you want to come to the podium, please. Welcome.
Thanks. I've got two topics this evening. The first is in regards to a DCBA member, One Fish Raw Bar, and their efforts to clean up the trash situation outside their restaurant, pun intended. I believe most, if not all, of you on the city council have sent emails from One Fish and their customers regarding the trash buildup after the farmer's market, and actually drove through downtown Campbell this evening, and the trash bin outside of their restaurant is quite full. And I know that the owner has made several attempts to contact the city and urban village to no avail, and they have since made a, what I consider a pretty reasonable request, to move the trash bin from their restaurant. So I would like to request on behalf of this DCBA member, I would like to request that the city takes action and follows up with One Fish and with the DCBA board. I know you can't comment on that right now. Next is the topic of the motion being passed to evaluate marijuana ordinance for Campbell. As you begin work on the two thousand and twenty-four fiscal year city council priorities, I might remind you that one of the attractive qualities of Campbell is that it's a town filled with activities geared for all generation and walks of life, and if we take a look at the demographics for consumers purchasing opioid products at Cloud City Supply, you will find a diverse customer base ranging in age from twenty-one to customers in their seventies and beyond and from all walks of life. I ask you, please, do not fall prey to generational misconceptions about what cannabis consumers look like or that it is a gateway drug, because this is what cannabis consumption looks like. So again, I will ask all of you, what legacy do you want to leave behind from your time on the city council? Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. The next speaker I have a card for is, I apologize in advance if I mispronounced, Nalimau? Nailma? You'll have two minutes to speak.
Hello, my name is Blood. The reason I'm here.
So I have...
Oh, okay. So the reason I'm here, me and my wife were fellow business owners in the same courtyard as Amy, and we would like to express our support for the initiative to reevaluate the cannabis program that I believe Amy has started. One thing I would like to say, that I would rather have trusted business owners like Amy to conduct this business, rather than having some people out of town doing shady kind of deals. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And is there anyone else in the chamber that wishes to speak on the oral request? And we do have one person online, Veronica River Harris. Are you there?
Hello, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Excellent. I'd like to take my two minutes to do a little bit of cannabis education here. As one of the primary cannabis educators at Cloud City Supply Inc., we talk a lot about all sorts of different cannabinoids, but what we brought on in the past three months is a hemp-derived delta- nine THC, and THC has been wonderful for helping bolster other cannabinoids, including CBD, in relieving pain and anti-inflammatory benefits, as well as bolstering additionally anti-nausea, suppressing muscle spasms, as well as stimulating appetite, or as what we lovingly call the munchies. These different things in which cannabinoids can help really invigorate, or, excuse me, reinvigorate the individual to have a better and healthier relationship with food, to have a more susceptible, like, body presence when they have seizures in the case of CDN, as well as THCA can inhibit cell growth in cancers. Now, since in the past three months, I have some numbers for you, we have brought on these products. We had found that approximately thirteen percent of our total edible sales were made from just these new products that were still federally compliant to the twenty-eighteen Farm Bill, but have THC. These products have encapsulated and changed the brains of folks who are looking for an alternative to CBD that has more of that embodied experience to it, to relieve pain, to help transport the mind to a different state, as well as help relieve a lot of the stresses of the day. Now, having clear and clean an access to it is so important. As someone who grew up in a time where you didn't have this sort of access, as I've mentioned before in my initial speech, that having access to clean, clear, like, reported and documented products has had a more of an educated approach for how I can safely and consciously consume cannabis.
Thank you, Veronica. I appreciate it. That concludes oral requests, and I'll move on to announcements. The clerk's office is accepting applications for the Planning Commission until five PM on August eleventh. To find out more about this position or to apply, please contact the city clerk's office at four oh eight eight six six two one one seven, or visit the city's website at campbellca.gov. The Campbell Police Department will be taking part in the annual law enforcement torch run on Friday, June twenty-third, at ten AM this Friday. Each year, hundreds of law enforcement personnel participate to bring awareness and raise funds for the Special Olympics. Keep a look on social media for more updates on how you can support this cause. Car enthusiasts, enthusiasts, come visit the Campbell Classic Show sponsored by the Downtown Campbell Business Association on Saturday, July eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, from nine AM to four PM. The event is a family fun event and free to the public. In honor of July being Park and Recreation Month, Natasha already spoke about the thirty-one days of events that are going to be happening at the community center and to log on to www.campbellca.gov/PRM for more information. The city of Campbell's Summer Concert Series is back with a modified schedule. Admission is free, and concerts start at six thirty PM on the Orchard City Green. Bring a lawn chair and enjoy the RJ Hoss Band on Thursday, July sixth, and the Joint Chiefs Band the following Thursday, July thirteenth. There is fun and recreation for everyone at the Campbell Community Center. The community center pool is now open. A great way to cool off during the summer heat is to visit the outdoor pool. LAP SWIM equipment, including kickboards, pool boys, and noodles are available for use. Visit the city's website at campbellca.gov to find out more about SWIM lessons and hours of operation. And finally, city offices will be closed for business on Tuesday, July fourth, and observance of Independence Day, police and emergency services will remain open. I'll move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a request is made by a member of the city council, city staff, or member of the public. Any person wishing to speak on any item on the consent calendar should ask to have the item removed from the consent calendar prior to the time the council votes to approve. If removed, the item will be discussed in the order in which it appears. Are there any council members, staff, or members of the public that would like to pull in for a discussion? If not, could I get a motion to, and a second to approve the consent calendar items two through seven? So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Landry and a second by Councilmember Lopez to approve the consent calendar items two through seven. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cazola.
Hi.
Councilmember Fortado.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Landry.
I, present.
Hi. We'll now move on to public hearings and introduction of ordinances. Item eight is adoption of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four operating budget and two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-twenty-eight five-year capital improvement plan and establishment of the appropriations limit for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four. Presenting will be city manager Brian Levenfall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. It's my privilege to present to you the final proposed budget for council consideration of adoption this evening. We've been through a long process, and I have to say, I feel like we've talked about budget and priorities a lot this last spring into the summer here, and on this slide, we're highlighting what those dates are for the public to understand that this is an iterative process. It goes through many steps from setting council priorities to having study sessions, and then more recently to this budget and CIP introduction that was done on June sixth, culminating with tonight. Hopefully, what we're reflecting here tonight is the culmination of all of that work, taking into account council feedback from your last meeting, and we're going to talk to you about what has changed since that last meeting. And then ultimately, tonight, our objective is to ask you to adopt the operating budget, a five-year CIP budget, and establishment of the appropriations limit for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four is often referred to as the GAN limit. So those are three things we're asking for you to take action on this evening. Excuse me. Excellent. This slide, we're highlighting for you the changes since June sixth, when we did the introduction. In particular, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan that we did not get grant funding for, we heard from the council that that was important and suggested funding with ARPA funding. So we have done that in this budget. Also, likewise, the Climate Action Plan was something we pursued grant funding for, and also we're not granted that fund. Likewise, council input was, that was a high priority project, and we are dedicating ARPA funds pursuant to that feedback from the council in the amount of three hundred thousand. And then lastly, what's labeled City Hall Public Counters and Accessibility Improvements. When we did the introduction, we had packaged this improvement along with other ADA improvements, including council chamber improvements and some other improvements, and we've applied for state grants in the amount of one and a half million dollars for that. We still have not heard back whether those will be granted or not. But at the introduction, we heard from the council that the accessibility improvements, the counter improvements, were really a high priority, so we pulled those back out of that greater project and are suggesting, based on council's input, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars of ARPA funding for that part of the project. Should the state grant be successful, the ARPA fund would be made whole, and this expenditure would be taken out of that state grant. The other recommended changes were just some nuances. I'm not going to read all of these to you, but they were slight staffing changes and a membership that we had forgot to include in the original introduction, so. With that, not a lot of changes in significance. This next slide is going to tell us where we've ended up with those changes. As you can see here, revenues and expenditures, if you go over to the far second column from the right, fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four proposed. You can see the revenues and expenditures is going to result in just a very slight surplus of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This is slightly down from the two hundred and thirteen we proposed at June sixth because of some of those changes that I just mentioned. And then lastly, with the capital improvement program, you know, what we're asking for is a five-year program that's a value of ninety-four million dollars. New projects this year is seven point six million, and for this year are projected expenditures of eight point nine million. And as I previously highlighted, the only change to this one is the public counters and accessibility improvement. That is in fact the reflected in the CIP, so that is your only change in your CIP other than what we showed you. There was some slight corrections to some of the years, make sure there was consistency with the dog park and escape park for the years that those were projected. So with that, those are the only changes we've made in your budget document. We certainly have a lot more detail if the council wants to hear it, and our finance director is here, and I want to thank him for him and his work and his staff's work to get us where we are, and also want to recognize the department heads that are all here and staff that has worked on this budget. If there's any questions from the council, they're relative to those departments. They're also available for questions.
Thank you, Brian. I will take questions from the city council. Anybody have a question? Wow. That's good. You guys have done your job. So if there are no questions, I'll open the public hearing and ask if anybody in the audience wishes to speak on the item. And I do believe that we have one person online who wishes to comment on this item, and that would be Veronica River Harris. You have two minutes, Veronica.
Hi, I wanted to point out and see that currently the evaluation of the cannabis program is underneath the council priority of long-term land use planning and housing. I was curious to see if there was a way that we would be able to add it as an additional priority under community health and safety, as I feel that there's definitely a component of both of those things in a cannabis program, in addition to, of course, the ordinance of where we get, where a dispensary would be placed, the traffic, the everything that has to go into that, the zoning and everything, in addition to the community support and the community health and safety components of it as well.
Thank you. We will have the city manager's office follow up with you tomorrow. Did you hear me, Veronica? Sorry.
Thank you very much. The phone number that I have listed is five for that.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? If not, all... If not, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for a discussion and or a motion. Councilmember Lopez.
Yeah, I have a couple of things and one is, you know, you've heard this feedback before, but one, I really appreciate the this budget process, which I think has resulted in a lot of transparency and that's probably the lack of questions. It's not a lack of engagement, but just the fact that a lot of this has been so vetted, which I really appreciate. Actually did want to follow up just from my own knowledge. I guess I'm curious, I'm not assuming that on the question that was raised by the public commenter and I'm not assuming that needs to be changed, but could we just get a little? And I appreciate that staff will be following up. Like, can we just get a little bit of thinking on why one category versus another?
You know, it's somewhat subjective. I think honestly, it's somewhat subjective what category to place it in. It was our best guess that that there's a lot of, I think, community development land use regulations that goes into. That's why we placed it in there, but certainly with the discretion, the council could change what category if there's a feeling that way. Recognizing there's, as we introduce those work plans, there's probably several different ways to categorize some items, but.
Yeah, and I'll, you know, I'll just close my comment with, I think the important thing is capturing the discussion. So I don't have strong feelings on the category and I defer to staff's recommendation on that, but I appreciate transparency and follow up, you know, as we have this discussion.
Thank you. Councilmember Fortado.
I'll make some general comments. First of all, as the city manager pointed out, this has been a long and deliberative process for us. I think we took into account many considerations appropriately so. First of all, we took into account some of the recommendations or many of the recommendations of the staff as they have analyzed things that need to be done in their respective areas and things for the good of the city. And likewise, this year it was an excellent process as we developed council priorities and things that we on the city council as the residents elected representatives as we felt were important to the city and for the future of the city. And I think we went through a very good analysis of that. Of course, we're constrained by funds, which we always have to keep in mind what's available to us and what, you know, what is going to be left over in the balance. Likewise, we are influenced a lot more in recent years by the legislature of the state of California, the influence they have on cities and things that they demand. We went through a very thorough process for housing and we are going to be meeting many of those needs, I think, but in terms of our emphasis, in terms of our general plan and housing element which we approved and the positions that we are going to provide funding for now to meet those demands in the area of housing, but in the area of emergency management and a variety of other areas as well. So I think it's been a very good process. I think we do have to keep in mind some of our potential future needs. We, you know, we are coming out of COVID, the city is recovering. And one of the things that has helped us, of course, are the ARPA plans, the American Rescue Plan Act funds coming from the federal government, but they are beginning to dwindle and of course, we have to commit those plans in the near future. So we're not going to always have that as a source of funds. We have some long-term responsibilities to think about. For example, we still own the two fire stations and they have been here for a long time and some attention needs to be paid to some work that probably needs to be done at both fire stations in the future. We have to look to the future obligations that we will have in terms of pension funding that is probably going to be an element, especially in next year's budget. And I think we also have to kind of focus on our reserves and make sure we have a healthy balance to plan for unexpected expenses. We have several older buildings now. The community center, for example, requires attention that I think we'll have to plan for. But I think we also, as a council and a city, we're able to provide competitive pay increases and recognize the excellent work that our staff does to keep them competitive with their peers in other cities and so on. So I think overall, in summary, I think it's a good budget, a sound budget. And I want to thank the city manager and the staff for their input, the public's input and likewise for the rather thorough and deliberative process that we went through. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Landry.
Yeah, thank you. Really great thank you to staff and all the work, especially Will leading the department and all the financial. I'm glad you're good at numbers because I certainly am not. I think what's really clear and obvious, the way it was prepared this year is how we took what we started with in February as our strategic plan, our strategic vision, our goals for the city, really looking forward and how that has gotten implemented through the budget. And I think it makes it very clear to the community where those items are falling within that goal. And so much of our strategic planning has to do with looking at the future. And so the fact that we are going to fund the Parks and Recreation Master Plan now, I think is wonderful. You know, me and my whole part about inclusiveness and ADA compliance, I'm great. The council supported having just even simple counters, but it's our way of including our community, whatever level that people are at, and looking forward to our youth and sustainability, where our buildings are at, what do we need to do to keep moving forward? And I know Amy keeps coming to every meeting and talking about cannabis, which I actually support, but it's a future, it's where the future, it's things like that that really need to be considered as our city as we move forward, where the trends are, where the community is and where our youth is and what things that they are going to need. So I'm really happy for the additions to the budget and thank you all for all the hard work that you did, Brian, Steve Landry, and also all the departments that contributed to the hard work. And I'm looking forward to the next year to make sure we get everything done. Right, staff?
Councilmembers Scololo.
Yeah, first of all, I know it's a lot of work, but you guys make it look easy, honestly. Like, when I looked at the budget, I can't compliment enough that what I got was, even though I'm also not a huge numbers person, I looked it over and it made a lot of sense. The color coding is great. I'm really looking forward to this next year. I hope that, you know, all the budgets, quite frankly, are this simple. Thank you again for making it look so simple, even though you guys are clearly clearly putting in hard work. And I also really appreciate that it's very clear that you guys listened to us up here, saw what our priorities were and you made adjustments to our suggestions. And that is so appreciated and I think I speak for all of us up here that, thank you very much for that.
Great, thank you. And I want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues and also just reiterate that I think it's important that we continue to use a conservative approach towards our budget development. We still have a lot of unmet needs there and future obligations. And the future is somewhat still uncertain as to the recovery from COVID. So I do think that it is imperative that we continue to be conservative in our forecast and in our development. And I also want to say that I appreciate the great job that the staff did in balancing the council priorities and trying to address needs, staffing needs and place resources where they're needed, that they're going to be critically needed in this next fiscal year. So thank you, thank you, Will, thank you, Brian and the team.
No, and I'll be quick, but just, you know, I agree with everything, all the great comments. If I can just add one thing, it's that this year the process has really felt like we're all a team moving in the same direction, even though there's been back and forth in discussion, but council and staff, you know, I see the teamwork there. And so that's really appreciated and I just, I look forward to continuing in future years on all that momentum.
Thank you. So if there are no further comments, I will entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that the city council adopt a resolution adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-four city operating and capital budgets, including transfers in the amount of ninety-two million, two hundred and seventy-one thousand and thirty-eight and thirteen million, three, I'm sorry, five fifty-six seventy-three for the combined total budget of one hundred and five million, eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and eleven. An adoptive resolution adopting findings that the proposed fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-eight capital improvement plan, the CIP, projects are categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA and are consistent with the city's general plan, approving the five-year capital improvement plan with projects totaling ninety-four million, five hundred and ninety-four thousand, seventy-nine and including new capital projects at seven million, six hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and eight million, nine hundred and eighty-three thousand, twenty-eight as the amount necessary to meet the capital requirements of the city in fiscal year twenty-four, directing staff to incorporate within the final adopted and published fiscal year twenty-four budget document any changes or adjustments pursuant to the public hearing and any other minor corrections prior to the budget's final publication and adopt a resolution establishing the appropriations limit of fiscal year twenty-four at, excuse me, ninety million, two hundred and eighty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty, pursuant to Title nine, eight B of the California State Constitution.
Second.
Thirteen, I am sorry, like I said, numbers aren't my thing, even Roman numerals.
So we have a motion by Vice Mayor Landry and a second by Councilmember Scololo to approve the staff recommendation. May I have a roll call?
Councilmember Lopez.
Hi.
Councilmember Scololo.
Hi.
Councilmember Fortado.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Landry.
Hi.
Mayor Barbie.
Hi. So we'll move on to new business and we have the three items under new business that are related to salary adjustments and that are somewhat interconnected. So I'm going to announce the three items and our human resources manager Jenny Lee Christiansen will present on all three of them and then we'll take individual questions on the items. So item nine is our resolutions approving salary schedule adjustments for the unrepresented employee groups, including confidential employees, management employees and unclassified management employees. Item ten is a resolution approving an adjustment in salary for the city clerk services. And item eleven is a resolution approving an adjustment to the salary for city manager services and amending the city's salary schedule for the city manager classification. And welcome Jenny Lee Christiansen.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. For recruitment and retention purposes, HR staff work with Bryce Consulting Firm on a total compensation study for all represented groups and provided market adjustments for any positions or classifications that were below market within the last year. As part of that classification study, we also did classification studies for unrepresented groups. So what's presented in the staff report are classifications for those unrepresented groups, those classifications that fall within confidential classified and unclassified management to ensure that we have fairness and competitiveness in our unrepresented groups. So staff is recommending that we adopt a resolution updating the annual salary schedules to reflect the twenty twenty-two market adjustments for these unrepresented groups for confidential classified and unclassified management classifications effective July tenth of twenty twenty-three for any positions that fell below the labor market mean. And then the other two recommendations is to adopt a resolution adjusting the salary of the city clerk to account for the market adjustment provided for the certain positions within unrepresented management employees. And then third, lastly, is to adopt a resolution authorizing an adjustment to the salary and approving an annual salary schedule for the city manager classification. And I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. And are there any questions of the council on any of the three items? So I will open it up for the public to anyone wishing to speak on this item. Come forward. Don't see anybody in the chamber and I don't see anybody online. So I will close the public portion and bring it back to council for discussion and a motion. And what I would recommend is that we do each item, a separate motion for each item for minute purposes. Any discussion or comment? Vice Mayor Landry.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment and thank you Jenny for the hard work and for your department. And I think it's great that we can get everybody to a pay level that's at the mean that there were several classes that were not close and the fact that we're being able to bring everybody within the mean. I mean, the cost of living here is so high that we want to be able to retain all our wonderful employees and making them just and whole is so important. So thank you very much.
I mean, Councilmember Lopez.
And I also want to commend you Jenny for this whole process and the data and information that's gone into that to support all those discussions, because I know there's a lot of hard work that's gone into that. And it really hasn't made a difference. Appreciate it.
Okay, any other comments? Well, I'll entertain a motion on item nine.
I'll move that the city council take actions to, one, adopt a resolution updating the annual salary schedule to reflect twenty twenty-two market adjustments for confidential employees. Two, adopt a resolution updating the annual salary schedule to reflect twenty twenty-two market adjustments for classified management employees. And three, adopt a resolution updating the annual salary schedule to reflect twenty twenty-two market adjustments for unclassified management employees effective July tenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Lopez and a second by Vice Mayor Landry to approve the staff recommendation. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lopez.
Hi.
Councilmember Scololo.
Hi.
Councilmember Fortado.
Bye.
Vice Mayor Landry.
Hi.
Mayor Barbie.
Hi. That moves us to item ten. If there's no other discussion, could we get a motion to approve item ten?
Make a motion that the city council adopt a resolution adjusting the salary of the city clerk to account for the market adjustments provided to certain positions for the unrepresented management employees.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Scololo, a second by Councilmember Fortado to approve the staff recommendation. Roll call.
Councilmember Lopez.
Hi.
Councilmember Scololo.
Hi.
Councilmember Fortado.
Bye.
Vice Mayor Landry.
Hi.
Mayor Barbie.
Hi. And that's the final item is item eleven, if we could get a motion to approve.
Sure. Okay, so make a motion that the city council adopt a resolution authorizing an adjustment to the salary and approving the annual salary schedule for the city manager classification.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Scololo and a second by Vice Mayor Landry to approve the staff recommendation. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lopez.
Hi.
Councilmember Scololo.
Hi.
Councilmember Fortado.
Bye.
Vice Mayor Landry.
Hi.
Mayor Barbie.
Hi. Thank you. Thank you, Jenny. Our next item is a public hearing to provide an update on the below-market rate housing program activities over the past year and consider the adoption of a resolution dispensing with the bidding procedures approving a consultant services agreement with House Keys Incorporated and authorizing the city manager execute the agreement. And presenting is our community development director, Robbie.
Thanks, I just jumped in for a few words and I'll hand it over to Stephen. So again, Robbie Street, Community Development Director. This is a new contract with House Keys, who's been the VMR provider for several years for the city. Just want to represent in general, there is a larger investment into the House Keys contract tonight that is consistent with the recommendations of our audit that you received a couple of council meetings back and is also consistent with growing the housing program, consistent with the budget you've adopted. We're looking at higher housing manager that will work with House Keys on the VMR program. And there are also other investments are intended to grow the program. Some of the growth in the program will be expanding the number of affordable units, which we want to help develop in the city. And with that, of course, will be newer affordable units going to our below-market rate program. That's reflected in the growth in the contract tonight. And with that, I'll hand it over to Stephen that will go through the metrics and some of the more rationale. We also have Julius representing House Keys tonight. Thank you.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor Barbie, members of the council. So this is a recap, the purpose of this item is to provide an update in cities below market. So this is a recap, the purpose of this item is to provide an update in the city's below-market rate housing program and to review changes to consultant services agreement with the city's below-market rate. Housing Program Administrator, House Keys, which is Julius here in the audience tonight. This is all prior to authorizing the city manager to execute a one-year service agreement. So I'm just kind of breaking down the individual components of the program in brief. The rent a program of the city has fifty-one units which are spread across five developments. In 2022, we had four hundred and three applications for five units, which amounts to about eighty applicants per unit trying to apply for units which are available for the program. As an update on the homeowner program, there are currently eighty-four units which are spread across seventeen developments of these units. Again, in the last year, as an update, we have three opportunity drawings which drew in five hundred and eighteen applications for about a hundred and seventy-three per active unit. In regard to the loan program, House Keys also oversees the city's affordable housing revolving loan program. As there are no performing notes, all loans are considered current. And from these loans, the city receives approximately eighty thousand dollars in interest payments which help pay for program administration. So since the the city's hired House Keys in 2016, the city's approved a series of one-year contracts, one after another, with the current contract set to expire later this month. The proposed contract would be would also be for a one-year service contract and includes two key, two key changes. The first would increase the base administration fee paid to this, from the city to the program administrator from one hundred and sixty K to two hundred and five thousand dollars. And the second would change the termination language or a minimum of a six-month notice period prior to termination without cause. As noted in the report, the cost increase was recommended as part of the city's housing program audit to scale for new housing unit production. The increase also responds to a universal increase in the base service cost of services offered by House Keys to all the cities that they service, which starts at a minimum now a minimum of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And also unique to Campbell acknowledges that the city's program does require a little bit more effort to administer given our more active compliance theme. In conclusion, staff is recommending that the city council adopt a resolution dispensing with the bidding procedures and approving a one-year consultant service agreement with House Keys to service the city's below-market rate how- housing program administrator. That concludes staff's presentation, thank you.
Thank you. Does Julius wish to speak or? Or do we want to wait?
Julius is primarily support for questions if we have any.
Okay, thank you. I didn't want to overlook him.
Appreciate it.
Are there questions of council? Okay, if not, is there anyone in the public that wishes to speak on this item? And let me just double check on online, I don't see anybody. Okay. So there's no one wishing to speak, I'll close the public portion and bring it back to council for discussion. Councilmember Portado?
Make a brief comment. First of all, I think this is a good program for us to continue. I think it's important to have a organization that are expert in this field and can help us management. And with the new positions that we're providing for in our budget this year, our city staff will be able to coordinate this more assertively as well, hopefully to achieve our housing goals, work toward that goal, as well as address homelessness. So I would be in support of this motion or of this action.
Another. Vice Mayor Landry?
Yeah, I want to thank staff, Rob and Stephen, and also Julius. Thanks for all the years that you've been working with us and I look forward to another year. And I just, it's amazing how many people have applied for so few units and just shows what a need there is out there. And I'm really looking forward to as our housing manager gets on and as we work through all the plans that we've approved that we can add more to the load of very low income categories. Excuse me. So thank you all and I support this item.
Councilmembers Scazola?
Yeah, definitely highly in support of this item. It's very obvious affordable housing is so desperately needed. And just looking at these numbers here, how many applicants apply per unit, it's pretty wild actually. But I did some math and I was pleasantly surprised. It looks like if we hit all of our goals, that we're actually going to have right around what we need in the future. Based on the amount of applicants we have right now. It it looks like if, you know, knock on wood, we're projected to actually have the amount of below-market rate housing in the end, so we just have to hit our targets. And I'm just so happy to see that, that the math actually makes sense. So well done guys on that as well.
Councilmember Lopez?
I also really want to thank staff for for their work and Julius for your ongoing work, which as we see is deeply impactful and needed. And what I'm really excited for is is that I feel like finally, you know, the few years that I've been here and and we've had discussions come up that now we're we're going to have someone full-time who can provide that more holistic strategy. And I think this is going to be, of course, a really important piece of that. I really appreciate of of everyone's leadership on this.
Thank you. And I just want to mention too that it was eye-opening to see that the number of applications for so few units that are available and what what a need we have. And it's unfortunate we can't do more, but. And I also want to thank House Keys for their service and support of our program. And I do think with our new housing coordinator efforts, it's going to be even even more robust. So thank you. And with that, I will entertain a motion.
I would move the adoption of item number twelve based on the recommended action of the staff.
Oh, that was easy. Read it all.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Portado and a second by Councilmember Lopez to approve the staff recommendation. Roll call please.
Councilmember Lopez.
Aye.
Councilmember Scazola.
Aye.
Councilmember Portado. Vice Mayor Landry.
Oh, hard yes.
Mayor Bobby.
Yes. So we have no unfinished business tonight and that takes us to council committee reports. Does anyone want to start? Councilmember Portado?
Thank you, thanks again. I just want to report on two things. First of all, I have the pleasure of attending the annual meeting of the League of Women Voters, the local chapter. They are very active in our area and attempt to always inform the voters of important issues that they should consider when they go to the polls and advocate and so on. And the guest speaker for the lunch was the registrar of voters for Santa Clara County, Shannon Boucher. She gave an excellent talk specifically focusing on the security measures of the registrar's office in terms of voting, in terms of looking at people who are eligible to vote, in terms of the safeguards they have in place for people who should not be voting or try to vote twice or any of those kind of things, which are very minimal, if at all. And and also the the security for the whole process and the integrity of the ballots and counting and so on. So it was an excellent presentation. And then I also, last Friday on the sixteenth, had the the pleasure of also attending the annual meeting of the Association of Bay Area Governments. As you know, the Association of Bay Area Governments are a regional planning agency representing the one hundred and one cities and the nine counties that surround San Francisco Bay. So many of their projects then focus on the estuary and preservation of the bay as well as the bay trails. But the Association of Bay Area Governments also has a responsibility for the RENA numbers. But they, of course, are guided by state law and guidelines that come from the State Department of Housing. So it was a, it was an excellent meeting. Saw individuals, elected officials that I had known from before, but also many new members of councils and mayors and so on. And there is always an ongoing discussion, appropriately so, on the calculations of RENA and how it works in the state of California. And a number of people see the need for reform in some of the areas that have occurred in the RENA process throughout the state, not on the part of cities or counties, but on the part of the state calculations. So it was a good meeting and pleased to have had the opportunity to go. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Landry?
Yes, thank you. I'm on the education subcommittee, but with the end of the school year, we did not hold our meeting, plus we're waiting for the safe routes for school plan to be moving forward. I was also in the city manager and city attorney performance subcommittee meetings. Last, no, week ago Friday, several of us attended Anna Schu's Military Academy. And we had a representative from Campbell, a nice young woman who was going to Annapolis. Annapolis, her and her family was there, it was so cute. The, her little brother was taking selfies with me. I was like, I always think I've taken three in my life, okay, you can take one. So that was fun. Also, did you guys know we had spies in Rush, from Russia here in Campbell?
Oh, yes.
I went to the Ainsley House guest speaker series on Saturday to find out that we had spies in Campbell that were Russian spies. I thought that was so cool. We had a great gentleman who's a retired attorney who had this wonderful presentation and he cited a book that I actually found an original copy from nineteen seventy-four to actually read more about our spy in Campbell. Thought that was nice.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yeah, no, sorry to miss that history happy hour, it looked extremely interesting. And really appreciate that Councilman Portado was able to attend that, that A B A G meeting. My really exciting news to share, I had the pleasure last Friday as part of ETA on being part of a vote to approve what's called our visionary transit network. And Councilman Riscazola will be familiar with this. But this is basically the vision, the roadmap for, I wouldn't say quite long-term, but between short and medium term for laying out the future and the goals for VTA as an organization. And really focusing on providing improved service and ridership experience, really reducing headways, increasing weekend service. And it's great to have our fiscal stability in a place where where we're not having conversations about a fiscal cliff, but actually have a little bit of stability to be able to plan long-term. And there's going to need to be more discussions about ensuring there there's not resources. But I, you know, I see that as the important role of a board of setting that vision and and then working with staff to work to implement that. So I think really some exciting things coming. And especially ones that are going to serve Campbell and the West Valley region well, areas that haven't always been adequately served by transit. So really excited to to be able to to share that and hopefully more soon.
Councilmembers Scazola?
Yeah, so I also was at Congresswoman Schu's Military Academy event and it really was fantastic. It was my first time going to one of these events and it was so great seeing these young kids that are now going into adulthood and they've chosen this path of service. And and it was, one of my favorite parts was that Congressman Schu read a piece of what they had written about why they wanted to go this route, why they wanted to serve. And and it was also, and it was very beautiful, like like heart touching words. And and it was also, I love where we live so much because when you looked at that crowd of these young kids, it was just so representative of who we are and just, you know, multicultural, just people of different backgrounds. It was just a beautiful thing, beautiful thing. And the other event I attended was the city's association dinner. And Silicon Valley Clean Energy was one of the sponsors. So there was an emphasis on going electric, how important it is to, for public health and of course, climate change environment. And it was really interesting, they had speakers there. One thing, I had no clue how bad gas burners, stoves are until one of the speakers like really just laid it out in very plain English. And then I wrote some of these notes down, it's pretty wild, I have no clue. But there are, coming out of there is things such as benzene, which is a carcinogen, nitrogen dioxide particulate matter that increases respiratory problems, especially with people who already have the pre-existing asthma or things of that nature. But oh, and one of the most fun things about it too was that they're demonstrating, you know, because they're, you know, advocating going towards like electric in all ways, including your stoves, right? There's a huge, huge argument, I don't know if you guys are aware of this, but that you can't cook certain things on electric stove dust. But they showed that you really can, specifically with tortillas, these homemade tortillas, they are amazing, really delicious. And I mean, I'm no expert, but I could tell you, I I couldn't tell the difference, you know. So sold, I was sold. And especially after hearing about all the horrible health problems, you know, that come from from gas stuff. So anyway, so it was a really good event overall, just nice to see all the people in the crowd. Yeah, that's about it.
Hey, thank you. And I attended a meeting of the Friends of the Heritage Theater and I also attended the Military Service Academy reception. And it was a really nice event hosted by Congresswoman Schu. And I just want to announce that our July fourth council meeting has been canceled due to the holiday. And our next meeting will be Tuesday, July eighteenth. And I will now adjourn the council meeting. Thank you all.